For April 20, 2016, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to seal the non-public minutes?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First, on the agenda, anyone from the public who would like? Oh, geez, excuse me. Kevin, please call the roll.
Councilor Burns?
Aye.
Councilor Bowden?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councilor Nizaro?
Aye.
Chairman Levy?
Aye.
Anyone from the public would like to speak? Seeing none, public forum ends at 7:10. We have no public hearing tonight. Do I have a motion to accept the April 6, 2016, regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Do... or anybody have any questions?
I did have a change, and I need to just find it. It was just a typo.
Page?
I don't know, sorry.
Take your time.
Oh, it's page eight of the packet, under discussion, which is about halfway down the page. It says, "Councilor Weinstein asked the year of the second ambulance and what they would do for the rest of this year."
Is it page eight?
Page eight of the packet, which is six of the minutes.
Halfway down.
It says discussion about halfway down. It says, "Councilor Weinstein asked the year of the second ambulance and what they would do for the rest of this year." I wasn't sure what that was referring to.
The age.
Oh. Oh, what did you...
Age.
Oh, the age, okay.
You meant the age.
I read that, and I couldn't... Yep.
Like, how old was it?
I think you're right, okay.
Yeah, that needs to be reworded up.
Is everybody good with that? Anything else? Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilor Burns?
Aye.
Councilor Bowden?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councilor Nizaro?
Aye.
Chairman Levy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Report of the Town Administrator. Chief Seale, would you like to give us a report?
Sure.
Terrific.
I have received packets from the... or the Town Administrator received packets from the other departments. I don't have anything special other than that. We had a... I don't know if we were aware that there was a sewer backup on North Main Street. I talked to Sean today. They're working with the resident to get things put back to normal. They've been having some issues with people flushing things that shouldn't be flushed on the toilet, like rags and things like that, that are coming up, causing several of their backup problems. So Sean's going to be working on a campaign of public awareness so that we can try to get people not to put the wrong things into the system. We are insured, I believe, as a town, for the damages that have been caused so far, and he's working with the resident to try to make them whole and happy. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet since Steve left, town-wise.
Do any councils have questions regarding any of the committee reports? Town Administrator report? It's in the packet. Councilor Nizaro?
Regarding North Main Street. So that is basically within feet of where there was a backup exactly a year ago. Same sort of thing happened, business got flooded. Do you know, and maybe like, we could just ask Sean, like, if there's any... is there some systemic issue about that area of North Main Street that's causing it to be in that area?
I don't know. He indicated that they had a second one, believe it or not, which didn't cause any damage on Monday. So they had a sec...
Same area?
No, a different area of town. And he said both of them were caused by people flushing rags and things in the system that shouldn't have been in there. I think it's quite possible that maybe it's the same culprit that's doing it, or he says it's all over town. It's a town-wide issue for them.
You assembling a task force of officers to look into this?
Well, I'm hoping that they can figure it out. But he said they've had to pull pumps apart in the past in order to clear things, so...
It's actually not good.
No, it's not. It's causing them some serious issues on his end. But he said, "I think the thing to do at this point is to try to come up with a campaign so we educate the residents not to put the wrong stuff in there." They've actually got cameras in there watching now on a daily basis to try to see, you know, if there's something else causing it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Weinstein?
I know I've seen reports on like, 2020, or, you know, Good Morning America, whatever it is, that flushable wipes actually shouldn't be flushed.
Right.
And that could be, I don't know if they're rags or flushable wipes, but it really wreaks havoc on the whole system, so... So that was one comment, and I have another pod, aside from flushable wipes. And actually, in your report, in the drug overdose calls, because we had our monthly Newmarket ASAP meeting, and it was refreshing to hear that there haven't been any calls in 2016 so far for drug overdoses to the police.
Correct.
So whatever is happening, I hope it continues to happen.
It's a combination of public awareness, and the Coalition is as much to share in the credit as we are. We just met Tuesday with some of our partners in the area of police departments where we're going to be joining in a program called Safe Harbors, which is a way to get help to people who we come in contact who have drug issues. It's been really an issue in the past, and so we're excited about that. That should kick off this month with a soft start and a hard start by July 1st. It's going to bring laypeople right to the hospitals when we have a drug overdose to try to facilitate getting people some help. So if they don't have insurance, these people will help them get it. If they need a bed someplace or an inpatient program, they'll make it happen for them. So it's a great thing. So we're looking forward to that, and hopefully we won't have to send them too many people.
Thank you for that.
Councilor Thompson?
My... Sorry. Question is, do we have... have there been no overdoses or no overdoses reported to the police?
No calls.
Right.
None that we've had calls on since January. Personal... other people taking people to the hospital, and we're not aware of those, but things that we've responded to.
Yeah, no overdoses would be... is a lovely hope, but it's unfortunate. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just along that line, because I think it might have been a... maybe I misread it, but on page 11, it says, while we still have a... you're talking about the drug issues throughout the nation. You said, "While we still have a serious drug issue facing our nation and our community, at least for a three-month period this year, we can see a significant increase." I think that's probably... you mean decrease?
Decrease, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so you might want to change that, just because I don't want... if anybody should read this, they'll probably get the wrong impression. Any other questions? Because I had a couple. And maybe Mr. Malaski, since you're here, can I ask you a couple of quick questions, Rick? And you don't have to answer them now, maybe you can get the answers if you don't have them.
Sorry.
It won't take long. I was just wondering, it said contracted services for 2016. It's on page 23, I'm sorry, of the packet. It said, "Last year, we had $41,157, and this year it's $1,085." Is there... can we just... is there a reason that it dropped off that much?
No snow.
So that was strictly snow?
That's all snow removal.
Okay. So that leads me to the next question, which is on page 25, which is salt. Salt use seems... this is just my notation. Salt seems to be higher than one would expect in such a mild winter. So salt last year was $109,000, at least based on the numbers I think I'm reading here. This year it was $61,000. Is there a reason it's that close when the... you know, when we didn't have?
I wouldn't call that close. If you look at the tonnage, I think...
Well, we didn't have hardly any events. That's the only reason I ask.
Yeah. No, I mean, we had... I forget the total number of events. You have it right there, probably. But we had some ice storms and so forth, which...
Tonnages have.
Yeah. Okay. I just thought I'd ask, because I thought it seemed still, you know, a little bit higher. I didn't know if maybe there was a reason. I would have thought it might have been a little bit lower.
The only other comment I would add to that was, the shed was empty in the beginning, so we filled it, and I don't believe the year before that was the case. The shed was already full, so...
So we haven't used all of it?
There's like 300 tons that wasn't in the shed the year previous that were put in to begin the season. So that's about what we hold, is 300.
Okay.
And that, so that...
So you have quite a bit left over?
Well, the shed's next to empty now, but what I'm saying is, in the beginning of that cycle, there was an additional 300 put in that wasn't put in the year before, shown in that cycle, to stock the shed, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah. Yep, I get it. And that's it? That's all I got. Any committee reports? Councilor Burns?
Yes, so the planning board met last Wednesday, and I'll just go through kind of the points that we touched on, and then Dale was there as well, so if you want to add anything, please feel free. So Matt Sullivan from Stafford Regional Planning Commission was there, and we did go through the future land use chapter, made some edits to that, nothing too major. So he'll be back with the update and a copy on that. I'm assuming at the next meeting, is how that normally goes.
I think he has... he was going to get the next... the updated... with the revisions has to be out, because at the next meeting, they want it to be a public meeting.
Okay, all right.
Has to be able to post that in advance.
Right, oh, right. So... and then Eversource Energy was there to discuss tree pruning on Bay Road. So they had a list of all the trees and everything, so that all went through. And then there was a continuation of a public hearing for a subdivision along Grant Road, and it was just two plots. I think it was the Dearborn property that they were discussing, just that front area. So that was talked about. And then probably the biggest item was the Grape Street discussion, was the plot of land over on Grape Street that they're looking to put in its four kind of town home units. And there was people from the community there, and what ended up happening, they didn't vote last time, what ended up happening was they continued it again, and they're supposed to meet the Chaney group along with the planning, Diane, and they're supposed to meet and kind of discuss and bring more elevations to the planning board the next time, because the elevation they brought the last time was... it was like siding, and most of that area over there is all brick and stucco, so they wanted it kind of to flow better into that area so it wouldn't stick out. So they're supposed to get together and kind of work something out as a compromise so that, you know, it kind of fits better into the neighborhood. So that was continued. I don't know, did I miss anything, Dale?
I think it's worth adding that...
Legal opinion was really...
There was a legal opinion that went into that, which... because there had been some disagreement among the planning board members as to whether that could, you know, whether we could take aesthetics into account in approving the... their site plan. And we got an opinion back from the legal firm, the town legal firm, that we could, and it was the... that reflected... that process reflected the planning board's intention to use that authority, essentially.
So, that's it.
Very good. Any other committee reports? Just with respect to the planning board meeting, because I watched it, or I watched a good part of it. At the end of the meeting, it was stated that the chair of the EDC, which is me right now, wanted to have a meeting with the planning board regarding CCRC, which is the elderly housing for nursing, and depending upon the level of care, they vary. And they mentioned for New Road, but it's actually for 152 Innu Road, and there's a litany of options that are available and have been recommended by the committee. So it's really the CCRC for the entire community is what we were hoping to have a joint committee meeting over. So I just want to clarify that. And other than that, seeing no other committee meetings, and there's no... just need a motion for resolution 2015-1639, which is for authorizing the Town Administrator to purchase a Ford Police Cruiser with associated cost not to exceed $45,880.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you like to just give us a quick overview?
Sure.
Chief, do you mind?
The vehicle that we're looking to replace would be the next one that was due to go on the CIP. It is a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria. It's got about 110,000 miles on it that are fairly hard miles. I spoke with the town's mechanic. We've put about $5,800 into it in the last couple of years to keep it roadworthy, and there is some other work that needs to be done, brakes, water pump, some other things. And it's getting pretty tired. And so this would be the year that we planned in the CIP to replace it. The good news in all of this is that we now have sufficient funds in the extra detail police vehicle account. This is an account that we started eight or nine years ago by vote of the town at town meeting to create a revolving fund out of which all the police extra details are paid for. In addition to charging the contractors who asked the police officers to conduct traffic and other details, the town also charges a stipend to cover insurance costs and administrative costs of the billing and what have you. And we've been charging also for the use of the car on an hourly basis. So if we have a detail where a vehicle is used, we've been charging the contractor for that. In 2014, we had... we bought two cars in that year, and one of them we were able to buy out of this account, which left us with a minimal balance in the account. And since then, we've had a slew of work. We had that North Main Street water project last year where the vehicles were used quite a bit. And also this summer, we've been right out straight with Eversource and some of the tree trimming and pole work that's going on right now. And the balance in the account is about $85,000, $88,000 as of the time that I wrote the resolution. It's probably higher now.
It says 81, just so you know, I think. So I don't know if that's updated. Did I read that?
That's at the time you wrote the resolution, is it?
Yeah, I believe the last time I saw it was around $88,000. So there's funding in there which would allow us to buy the car completely out of this fund and not touch the CIP, which gives us a little... gives the taxpayers a little break. The money will still stay in the CIP, obviously, for future purchases, but might actually be okay next year to cut back on the CIP contribution and still leave us with a fair reserve in there. I went out to... got the state bid on the car, which is the Ford utility that you see that we've been switching to. I solicited three bids from outfitters that we have used in the past. The three bids came in, and actually, the people we've been using the last couple of years that have done a really good job with the car came in at the lowest bid. So the price that you see there is the lowest bid. So I would anticipate that that would be right around the exact cost of what it's going to cost us to buy and open the car. I think that's it. If anybody's got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Councilor Burns?
That was from the committee reports.
Any questions? How does it compare to like, a regular, you know, like a Crown Vic or something like that? Is it same ballpark, or...
Well, it's about... this year's... this car is $115,000, $115 more than it was last year, so stick up for this one a little bit. But it's a six-cylinder vehicle. Its horsepower is similar to what the V8s were. It's very economic... well, I can't say it's very economical in gas, but it is much better than the Crown Victorias with the eight cylinders were. It's roomy. Ford has built it as a police vehicle. It's a Explorer body, but it's got a specific police car frame under it. They handle extremely well in the snow, so the Crown Victorias were horrible in the snow. So now we have... It's great in the wintertime. They handle well, there's plenty of room for the gear, there's plenty of room for passengers.
Are they going to all be converted?
Yeah.
Someplace?
Yep, and so we only have one... we only have one Crown Vic that's still online right now, and that'll go next year. The other good thing is that we have... I've been asking every year for us to buy new radios as a separate warrant, as a separate resolution at the time we buy the cars, because we've been phasing out the old radios. This is the first time that we don't have to buy a radio. We phased them all out one at a time over the last few years, and we're actually taking a radio out of one of the other car, out of the Crown Vic that we're retiring and putting into this car. The rest of the equipment pretty much is new, but the radio and the radar are all coming out of the old car, so we were able to reuse that.
Great. Seeing no other questions, please call the roll.
Councilor Burns?
Aye.
Councilor Bowden?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councilor Nizaro?
Aye.
Chairman Levy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have a motion to accept resolution 2015-16-40 regarding the town hall first floor bathroom renovations, because then I...
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Matt, do you want to give us a little... were you overseeing that a little bit, or...
Yes, sir.
I think he was.
General Foreman.
Yep.
Yeah.
He wears a lot of hats.
Okay, good evening, I'm Matt Angel. Welcome to the Town Council. As you may know, the bathrooms downstairs were terrible. Let me just kind of give you a... we've been asked by Steve to go in and see if we can do some renovations. What we did was, is we tried to solicit several different firms to provide renovation costs. We submitted... I'm sorry, we went after nine companies. Only two of those gave proposals. The low-cost bid for those proposals was $190,000 for the two bathrooms downstairs. Steve asked us to kind of look at it, to see what we can do to try to do this as inexpensively as possible. When we started peeking behind the walls, we found more than what we really bargained for, such as the shed right here behind the end of the building. The roof joists were literally broken. If some child had jumped up on that roof, they literally would have fallen through. We had electrical wires in the men's room that was... that looked like it was a rat's nest. There were no shut-off valves for either bathroom, so to actually repair a fixture, they would have to shut off the water for this building, the church next door, and the rectory behind that. There was no insulation in the walls. Actually, when the walls were taken down, a lot of people admired the nice-looking stone wall behind it. Unfortunately, it's... you don't see it anymore. And then the plaster was peeling from the lathwork, so those walls could not be used. When we looked at the fixtures, some of the toilets were the little shorty toilets that you would find in an elementary school. Some of the toilet seats didn't fit the toilets. We couldn't buy parts to retrofit all of this, so it turned into a gut job, all right? What we're proposing is $45,000 to essentially put it back together again, $13,775 for plumbing, $3,800 for electrical. Now, when it's popped open, we can add more electrical to the auditorium, because we had the backside of the auditorium open, $4,800 for drywall, $3,400 for flooring, $600 for framing. This would also move the custodial closet from underneath the stairs to inside the women's bathroom, and that gives them stand-up storage space that they could put all their supplies in, and also have like, a mop sink, as opposed to having that big, huge sink in the middle of the room. Insulation for $3,100. We had to replace the bulkhead, that was $3,500. Paint was $200. The small, little toilet paper dispensaries and all the little nuances that go into the bathroom is going to only be $327. And toilet dividers, we're assuming it's going to be $12,000. We're looking at the state bid for that, so... Any questions?
Councilor Pike?
Not so much a question, but I... it seems to me that had we paid... correct me if I'm wrong, but if we had paid one of the general contractors $190,000, a lot of what we're doing here would not have been included in that anyway. You didn't see it until you got into the mess. Is that a fair statement, or would it have all been included in there?
It would have all been included and more.
Okay.
We were looking to try to upgrade some of the bathrooms. This is going to be less of an upgrade. This is more or less keeping the fixtures in where they're places.
Including the little shorties, or...
No, no, no. So in the original plan, we were going to try to make a unisex bathroom over by the men's room, and that alone was $45,000.
Yeah. Well, anyways, I applaud for the resourcefulness. It seems like a... something that is a much more reasonable amount to spend, so I think it's a great job by the Town and Place.
Actually, it was a good job by the DPW. They're the ones that were in there, you know, just ripping down the walls and making it nice and clean. And they're also... the cool thing, too, is if they want like, hand dryers, there's going to be backing behind the walls, and there's electrical behind the walls, so that we can actually put that in in the future. So we didn't have that stuff before, so...
Good.
Councilor Nizaro?
So, Matt, this is coming out of Building Improvements Capital Reserve Fund, correct?
That's correct.
So we've been tapping into that for lots of little stuff along the way, mainly for this building, and that's for all the buildings, right? Correct?
Yes.
So we currently have 173 in there, so this is going to take it down to less than 100.
Yes.
Do we have a plan for how the rest of that 100 is going to maintain the other buildings in the town?
We were working on a plan. The problem is, some of these projects are coming in much higher than I expected for a lot of this stuff. The next big thing that we got to do is actually take off the siding off the PD and off the rec department. Just to remove like, that much off the bottom of the siding is going to be $45,000.
Each building?
For both buildings.
Which, so then, we're going to have like, $40,000 left in this thing?
Yeah, yeah, but these are... the problem is, is we've got a lot of delayed maintenance, and we're looking at different options to try to whittle that cost down. So we're trying to come before the Town Council with more reasonable numbers. Like, $190,000 is not reasonable.
And I think... so I think I was remiss when I voted for new carpet in here and painting in here, when there are things like siding and a bathroom with rat's nests of electronics behind the... behind the, or electric wires behind the wall, where we, like, I think these are the things like this that we need to be spending this on. I feel like the nice, new carpet in here is nice, but I probably should have voted against that so we had more money. So I am remiss in that. Thank you.
And this was in the CIP plan? This was?
The, the bathroom?
Right.
It, it's in our newer plan. I don't know if it's in the actual CIP plan. I haven't looked at that document in a month.
We discussed it in the CIP committee, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, I don't see any, oh, I'm sorry. Just a question with respect to all these quoted prices, like for example, new stalls for dividers and whatnot. Cause that's all been priced out, Matt? Did?
Yeah. All the numbers up above have been priced out, all right? The only one that was a guess to me was the toilet dividers. I have the person who is in the state bid, and, and we were just playing telephone tag when I was putting this together. So that is.
Just twelve grand? And I don't know enough about, maybe others do, but does that sound like a, a real number or?
I turned it over to Rick to see if he could reach out to that gentleman, but that's the only number.
I'm working on getting some better numbers on that.
One of the highest numbers, that's the only reason I ask.
It is. What they have now is this plastic dividers and the metal ones, and what I'm learning is the steel ones are a lot less expensive than the plastic, so I'm trying to get some better numbers. I think it was for the plastic, and that's why it was so expensive, because it's a petroleum-based product. We're gonna go with the steel, but I'm still working on getting better numbers. We'll, we're hoping to do better, but that was worst-case scenario.
Okay. So it may come in, because I don't know why, but I thought, and I, it's, there's just so many numbers flying around. I thought Steve said it was going to be in the twenties. That's the only reason I ask, and I could be completely wrong. I just don't recollect. But it, was that, was, was, was it always about forty, forty grand? Okay, all right. Cause I, I thought after the, after we decided not to go with the contractors, which clearly was above budget, for some reason I didn't think it was forty-five thousand, but in any case, so you'll go up to that and obviously you won't use it if you don't have to.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Rowan?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Nizarro?
Aye.
Chairman Levy? Aye.
And now we have a joint, let's see, this one I got, I'd like to read it because I never got a copy of this. Just gonna read the email because the chairman of the school board sent an email to Steve, and it's the first time I've seen it in this packet. Hi, Steve, the school board appreciates that while we've been busy with trans, transitions and hiring, et cetera, with the school district, the town council has been eager to satisfy the charter and hold a joint meeting with the board. The school board looks forward to this meeting and more in the future. The board has identified two members whom we hope will be joined by two council members. The idea is that those four might meet preliminarily to map out a brief agenda and propose how these joint meetings might be orchestrated. Additionally, they can work to identify a date for our first session. Thanks in advance for your help with the chair. Best, Nathan. So based on this, I guess the school board is asking, I think, Counsel, just, just so everybody knows, I think you've had to get in touch a couple of times to set up a meeting.
Yeah, and I think that the chair of the school board mentioned several times that we had been trying to coordinate with him, and it was not working.
So, and I think by charter, we're trying to do this, what, once a year?
Charter requires us to request it once a year. They're not under the charter, so they're under no obligation to actually meet, although I know they've desired to meet, it's just that their plate has been full.
Okay. So based on that, is there anyone that would like to, honestly, I didn't know, my only comment was I didn't know why we couldn't come up with an agenda. We had to set up a subcommittee to set up an agenda, but since that's the way they apparently want to do it, is, is there anyone that would like to participate in this subcommittee to figure out an agenda?
I'd be happy to.
I'd be happy to.
Counsel Pike?
Counsel Weinstein? Is everybody, do we need to vote on that, or is it, can we do a consensus?
Probably do a consensus.
Is everybody okay with Pike and Weinstein? Very good?
Yep.
So maybe you can reach out to the chair and get back to the council with a, an agenda or a proposed agenda. And I guess then we can discuss it. I don't even know if we have to vote on. I mean, I, I was a little surprised that we had a, have a subcommittee for an agenda, but that being said, I will await. Hopefully, we can do this sooner rather than later, because I don't, I don't know that we, we actually did it last year. But in any case, under new business, we have three resolutions. The first resolution is 2015-16-41, supporting the equality of all individuals without regard to actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Whereas the Newmarket Town Council recognizes, excuse me, and believes that it is the right of every individual to work and earn wages through gainful employment and obtain and enjoy good services, facilities, privileges, advantages, and accommodations in all places of public accommodation, and to obtain housing without regard to actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. And whereas the Newmarket Town Council understands that the denial or deprivation of human rights because of the sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Newmarket. And whereas New Hampshire has statewide protections against discrimination based on sex, age, sexual orientation, race, creed, color, marital status, familial status, physical or mental disability, or national origin in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations, but does not have similar prohibitions against discrimination against transgendered individuals, now therefore be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, that the town council adopts a formal policy of nondiscrimination regarding transgendered municipal employees by forbidding discrimination based on a person's gender identity and expression. And that, let it further be resolved that Newmarket Town Council does hereby urge the state of New Hampshire to amend its current anti-discrimination statutes to include language for anti-discrimination protections and equal treatment, respect, and dignity for individuals on the basis of gender expression and gender identity in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations. And that was introduced by Counsel Weinstein, Burns, and Counsel Nizarro. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just have a quick comment. There are two typos that I just want to point out and point out for the minutes, and I will do my best to remind, to send Stephen email. The third whereas, and then in the next paragraph also, it says transgendered, and it should be transgender.
That's it? Normally, you know, we don't ask questions regarding a first read, and I don't want to get into a whole Q and A thing, but I, I do think maybe Steve would like to, with respect to the first paragraph, get some feedback from our attorney regarding facilities, you know, using facilities and whatnot, and how that, you know, may translate into the town hall and using bathrooms and that type of thing. I'm, I'm reading it quite literally, and I think it's talking about using facilities and things of that nature. So I guess the question is, how would that, how would that affect the town hall? So I'd, I'd kind of like to, you know, get some kind of feedback before personally I vote for it. Otherwise, we can go to the meeting and we can ask questions, and then he'll have to get, get an answer.
Do you mean what accommodations we would have to make?
No, for example, if someone wants to use a toilet facility or a bathroom, and, and it's a men's room, and I'm not, I'm not well versed in this whole subject.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
So, but like, I think what you're looking at is the whereas. I think that the issue is that the resolution is that now therefore be it resolved, which is just nondiscrimination based upon municipal employees.
Well, I can appreciate that, but my question is in the first whereas. Does that mean, you know, just to answer Counsel Weinstein's question, if you have a male and wants to be a female, does the male go into a female's bathroom? Is that something that we're voting on in this? Cause I don't know the answer to that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd kind of like to know if, you know, it may be a whereas, but it's in the resolution. So I don't know what the expectation is, and since I am not apprised of all the nuances to this legislation and whatnot, it would be nice to know because it would affect the way I look at it, frankly. But anyway, I can.
I would, I would think, I mean, we would probably want to hear from a lawyer, but I would think that the generally accepted practice is that a person can use the restroom based on their gender they identify as.
Okay.
So that's.
So if I haven't, you know.
But I think that this is much bigger than a bathroom.
Well, that's why I'm, okay.
I'm just.
Well, it may be, but it's in there, so I figured I would, I would ask, because it would affect the way I, I view it. Anyway, I can tell Steve or talk to Steve, but perhaps you can get a little input. The next resolution is resolution 2015-16-42, authorizing the town administrator to enter into agreement to install a new preschool playground structure at the Leo Landreau Recreation Complex. Whereas the Leo Landreau wooden preschool structure is over twenty years old and is in desperate need of replacement, the wooden bridge is deteriorating, requiring a great deal of maintenance each year to make it accessible. Wooden playground structures are being removed and replaced on an as-needed basis. The structure meets that threshold. Whereas four companies submitted the following cost proposals to replace the preschool playground wooden structure with a four-color, heavy-duty molded plastic structure that is connected with metal poles and stainless steel connectors. The costs include the playground structure unit, the shipping and freight charges, and installation. And, oh, I'm sorry, there's more. I apologize. Thought we were at that. I guess, let's see, three companies. Uniplay Parks and Playgrounds, Inc., put in a quote of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five. O'Brien and Sons, eighteen thousand four dollars. Compania, Inc., twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-one. New England Recreation Group, twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Whereas Uniplay Parks and Playgrounds, Inc., is the lowest bidder and successfully met the design and material requirements specified from Newmarket Recreation Department. And whereas the Recreation Facilities Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of a hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and five dollars as of March thirty-one of sixteen, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council disauthorizes the town administrator to enter into agreement with Uniplay Parks and Playgrounds, Inc., for providing and installing a new preschool playground structure at the Leo Landreau Recreation Complex and approve the withdrawal of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars from the Capital Reserve Fund. Fifty percent of that amount, or eight thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, is due immediately with the balance due to, at the conclusion of the installation. And we have one last resolution, which is 2015-16-43, related to new road drainage improvements and Beet Street extension drain investigation. Okay, yes, they have to investigate this. Whereas the town needs to design new road drainage improvements and video inspection of existing drainage pipe on Beet Street Extension. And whereas the cost of the service is sixty-three thousand nine hundred. And whereas the Storm Water Management Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of a hundred and one thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars as of February twenty-ninth of sixteen, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council hereby authorizes the withdrawal of sixty-three thousand, or does, excuse me, does hereby authorize withdrawal of sixty-three thousand nine hundred for new road drainage improvements and Beet Street extension drain investigation. And that is all of that. And then we, we got a communication that I, I think would be appropriate for Counsel Nizarro to read.
Sure. So the town council got this letter from Link Together. To your town council members, can you help us with our honor hearts thank you project? We are thinking, we are thanking the veterans of Newmarket by making thank you hearts that will be displayed in the town hall. We are wondering if you would like to be included in our project. If you would, please write a thank you note. You can, please write a thank you note on one of the enclosed rectangles, which are right here. You can return them to the box in the town clerk's office. Thank you for your support. And signed by several of the individuals, Grace, John, and Gillian. So, yeah, so town councilors want them there.
Very good. Does anyone else have any closing comments, questions, statements?
I have a comment.
Sure. Counsel Weinstein?
This goes along with what we were discussing with the police report, and the Newmarket ASAP group is going to be hosting another community forum on May second at six-thirty at the rec center, and we're going to be focusing, we're gonna have a few different things. Kyle True will be giving an update on what's been happening in Newmarket, and also, more importantly, we're going to be talking about the Safe Harbor group and how Newmarket can work together with the Safe Harbor group to expand our resources and offer recovery coaching in the community, which is this model where people who are seeking recovery can be connected with a volunteer, a layperson, who would help them through the process, take some of that burden off of the police department, which is what the, you know, the police are, are trying to do that now. So it would be a person who was, who is trained, and that's what Safe Harbor is doing. And Safe Harbor, as Chief mentioned, is hoping to be online, I think, mid-May for their soft opening. And then rolling these resources out throughout the community to the seacoast.
May second?
May second is the forum, yeah.
Any other closing comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
We are.
Judge? Judge.
All right.